Good evening. I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the Newport News School Board for Thursday, April 24th, 2025. On behalf of the members of the school board and Dr. Mitchell, I welcome each of you present this evening and those who are watching on TV and online. A quorum is present to transact the business of the school division. We will begin tonight's meeting with an invocation and pledge to the flag. To do the honors are two students from Jenkins Elementary. We have Peyton Dean and Maria, is it Maria? Maria Peterson. First Peyton will come forward and deliver the invocation. She will be followed by Maria who will come forward and deliver the pledge. So Peyton, will you please come to the podium? You may introduce yourself and then get started.
Good evening. My name is Peyton. I am a fifth grader at Jenkins Elementary School. I am the student council president at my school. I am happy to deliver the invocation for today's school board meeting. Did you know that April is National Po- Poem Month?
No, I did not.
It is, and I have created a poem for you.
Thank you.
As a student of Jenkins, I stand with pride. In Newport News Public Schools, we learn and thrive. Each day brings a lesson, a challenge to meet with teachers who guide us and friends we greet. In the halls of our school where dreams come alive, where courage to grow, to question and thrive. From the colors of math to the world's history, we unlock our knowledge, we build our story. At Jenkins, we're Jaguars, bold and strong, with hearts full of hope, we all move along. Our spirit is bright, our future is so clear. We're leaders and learners, year after year. To the school board, we offer our thanks for giving us guidance and filling our ranks. With your support, we reach for the sky and dream for big, and dream big and bright as we soar up high. So I thank you today for the chance to be here to stand as a student with a voice so sincere. Together as one, we continue to grow and share the wisdom we're destined to know.
Oh my! Very nicely done.
Thank you.
Hello.
Put your right hand on your heart.
Okay. Stand up and do it.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands. One nation, under God, is indivisible, and liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. How impressive both of you are. Um, let's see Peyton, I heard mumbling up here, we need a copy of your poem. Yes, thank you so, so much. We have some family members and school supporters uh visiting, joining with our students. Would you all please stand? Thank you so much for taking time to bring them uh to our meeting tonight. It really does help us focus on the important things. Thank you. The next item on tonight's agenda are the school board recognitions. Dr. Mitchell, would you please join me at the podium?
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the uh school board board recognitions portions of our agenda this evening. Good evening. I have the honor and privilege of recognizing some outstanding members of our school community this evening. Activities and athletics enrich each student's school experience and play a major part in building skills such as leadership and teamwork. Dedicated coaches teach and mentor as part of the overall educational experience. Our first honorees this evening are team members and coaches from Warwick High School 2025 Blue Crab Bowl Championship Team. Please join me in congratulating them as po- as their names are called for them to come forward. Gwyneth Conaway. Darwin Robleiro De Leon. Elijah Jones. Elasia Jones. Forgive me, Elasia. Wayne Riddle. Elmar, Elmer. Sierra Valquez. Rudolph Valquez Lozada. And may we also have Warwick's head coach is Tristan Rivera and assistant coach is Victoria Allen. The Blue Crab Bowl is Virginia Regional Competition of the National Ocean Science Bowl. The Blue Crab Bowl showcases some of the Commonwealth's most talented science students as they display their mastery of ocean, ocean knowledge by winning Warwick Advance of the NOSB National Finals Competition on May 17th and 18th on Zoom. Congratulations Warwick. We want to take out, stay uh, come on past me. Don't leave me yet. We want to take a moment to acknowledge their family members and supporters who are present this evening. Would you please stand and be acknowledged? Say thank you. We also want to thank Warwick Principal Tiffany Thompson and Assistant Principals Jessica Wyatt Ottoman and Michael Edwards who may all also be with us this evening. Everyone to gather around, school board members, please join us at the front so we can get a photo. Next, we'll move into recognitions in the area of outstanding athletic programs. Tonight, we're thrilled to recognize the achievements of these talented students and athletes for the winter season, and we ask that each of you please remain at the front until your photo is taken with the school board. Our next honorees this evening are individual regional and state champions in the indoor track and field season. Please join me in congratulating them as their names are called for them to please come forward. From Heritage High School, Marcus Dozier, Region 3A Champion in Boys Long Jump. From Woodside High School, Dontre Walls, Region 5B Champion in Boys 55 Meter, Boys 55 Meter Hurdles and Boys 500 Meters. That's a whole lot. Also from Woodside, Amo- Ana- Anna- Anasia Daniel, Region 5B Champion in Girls 55 Meter Hurdles. And also from Woodside, Avia Hampton, Region 5B Champion in Girls Shot Put. From Heritage High School, we're proud to recognize the Class 3 State Championship Girls 4 by 200 relay team of Gianni Darden.
Okay, Gianni.
Jaleah Beasley. Talaya Clark. And Shanti Brown. Ashanti Brown. Heritage's head coach is Ray Pollard and assistant coach is Jackie Bateman. And from the Woodside High School, please join me in congratulating Demond Co- Collins for winning the Class 5 State Championship in Boys Triple Jump. So you did that three times. Woodside's head coach is David Gary and assistant coaches are Marsha, Marsha Parker and Keith Holland. Congratulations to each of these outstanding student athletes. We want to take a moment to acknowledge their family members and school faculty who are here to support them. You stand to be recognized? Absolutely. Stand on up there. Thank you for coming out. We're gonna take a quick photo. School board members, please join me to the front. And any principals, come on in. I see you. Don't be shackled. Next, we would like to congratulate the Minchfield High School Girls Basketball Team. Which won the Region 5B Championship. Please join me in congratulating them as their names are called for them to come forward. Kiara Bagwell. Kendall Bagwell. Keep it in the family, okay. Amen Byrd. McKinley Davis. Tanaya Henson. Jordan Holder. Damani Hyman. Quiera Jones. Madeline Leach. Nevea Reed. Jayden Rose. Olivia Rivera. And Michelle Willer. Minchfield's head coach Adrian Webb and assistant coaches are Jonathan Myers and Jimmy Clements, Ryland Harrison, Sean Harrison, Deshawn Hyman, Terrence James and Harriet Leggett. Take some village, y'all. Take some village. Congratulations, Minchfield. We want to also at this time take a moment to acknowledge their families and members and supporters who are in the audience. Please stand. We want to recognize you. Thank you for being here. As school board members, come on over. We're gonna get a photo. And NPS family, I would also like to thank Minchfield Principal Jason Holler, Assistant Principal Dr. Nicole Arrington and William Hustefler Stettler and Athletic Director Jenny Nutty-Pone who may be with us here this evening. Wave. Alright, thank you for being here. Our next honoree is Woodside High School Boys Basketball Team which won the Region 5B Championship. Please join me in congratulating them as their names are called for them to please come forward. Silas Barstel. Marcus Brown Jr. Date, Jaden Dietrich. Amari Hanby. Terrence Hayes. Danil Jarrett. Christian Laura. Marlon Montague. Kalen Morrison. Tyler Otis. Trenton Smalling. Isaiah Sterns. Avion Tucker. Darrell Tyler. Macia Wells Stevens. Woodside head coach is Stefan Welch and assistant coaches are Jeffrey Hall, Rashawn Chandler, Octavius Langford, Marlon Montague, James Dix and Eric Bagnon. Congratulations, Woodside. We do want to take a moment again to not acknowledge their family and members of supporters who are present this evening. Would you please stand to be recognized? We would also like to thank Woodside Principal Dr. Mary Hardisty, Assistant Principals Michael Bellamy and Grace Foley and Athletic Director Eric Battle who may be with us, may be with us this evening. If you are, please wave. Thank you for all you do. Again, we're gonna get a quick photo. School board members, please join me. I also want to acknowledge Dr. Alva Davidson from Woodside High School. If you are here, please come and wave. You want to say thank you? Newport News family, our final group tonight to be recognized this evening is Woodside High School's Boys Indoor Track and Field Team which won both the Region 5B Championship and State Class 5 Championship. I do want to share that some of them are away at a meet tonight, so many of them are not here with us. So we're gonna start off with Matthew Acosta Rivera. If you're here, please come forward. Daryl Boyd. Xavier Canfield. Demon Collins. Zayn Darby. Jared Flowers. Demir Granger. Joseph Hood. Mason Mompoint. Mason Mompoint. Zephaniah Felacious. Nathan Perez Lopez. Jamir Perkins Blow. Kalia Stokes. Aaron Tremble. John Trey Walls. And Evan Yarborough. Woodside's head coach is David Gary and assistant coaches are Marsha Parker and Keith Holland. Congratulations, Woodside. Come on out. As I said, many of them were not here tonight because they have a meet, probably winning some more medals, so. We do want to take a moment to acknowledge their family and members and supporters this evening. Would you please stand to be recognized? Again, we would also like to thank Woodside Principal Dr. Mary Hardisty, Assistant Principal Gracie Foley and Athletic Director Eric Battle who may all be with us this evening. We want to say thank you. Thank you. So, for the last time, school board members, come and join me over here. Alright, so at this time, our board recognitions have concluded, but the, our viewing audience uh will get the um NPS spotlight at this time. Those of you who would like to leave, you are welcome to do so, but you are welcome to stay for the remaining of the meeting and we'll see you in about six minutes.
With about fifty school days until graduation, Newport News Public Schools celebrated the class of 2025 with a high-energy senior rally. Held at CNU's Freeman Center, the rally invited seniors from all Newport News High Schools and alternative learning sites for a day of celebration, fun competitions and encouragement as they look forward with great anticipation. Students were enthusiastically greeted by principals and school leaders before formally being welcomed by School Board Vice Chairman Dr. Terry Best and CNU President Bill Kelly, who hopes to see many of these graduates enrolled as captains next school year. The senior class enjoyed stories of truth and inspiration from Dr. Adolf Brown III, a master teacher, educational psychologist, servant leader and business owner. Through his own powerful life story, he encouraged the senior class to work hard through every obstacle, show up ready to help others and grow beyond where they are to seize the future they want. In between speeches of encouragement, students danced, cheered and expressed an overload of school spirit. Fun games pitted schools against each other with students cheering on their peers to victory. Superintendent Dr. Michelle Mitchell wrapped up the festivities by proudly sharing her expectation that every senior in attendance will also graduate on time in June, rallying the class of 2025 to finish strong. Tenth grade students in Newport News Public Schools are ready to dive in. The soon-to-surface Maritime Engineering and Environmental Studies Academy offered a boat launch for interested students, giving them a splash of what to expect before the lab school opens its doors next school year. Fifty-three students from all six high schools were invited to a day of hands-on maritime exploration while gaining valuable college and career readiness skills. The event was co-hosted by Old Dominion University and Newport News Public Schools who are partnering together to offer the specialized Maritime Academy. When students arrived at the ODU Brooks Crossing Innovation Lab, they began constructing a motorized vessel. The engineering challenge demanded creative problem-solving and collaboration to successfully design and build their boat with limited supplies and time. Right outside the innovation lab, the student teams tested their boat's speed and stability while encouraging each other through friendly competition. During a provided lunch, students were encouraged to talk with local maritime employers and ODU educators to explore the rewarding career and college opportunities that the Maritime Engineering and Environmental Studies Academy will provide future enrolled students. Gildersleeve Middle School hosted an amazing event for their most special students to shine. Organized by family and community engagement specialists, educators and assistants, the Glow Event gave students an opportunity to play games, be active and socialize with peers and adults in a fun, safe environment designed just for them. With glow tape and black lights illuminating the gym, students received flashy swag as they visited a variety of engaging stations. Games, sports, sensory activities and a literacy station kept students involved and smiling for over an hour. for over an hour. Educators, staff, and police officers took time to attend, supporting the students and playing games alongside them. And just like any good party, free snacks, treats, and a goodie bag kept the students energized for more fun. For students and staff at Gildersleeve Middle School, it was a glorific day for everyone. Students engaged in a friendly war of words during this season's Battle of the Books. Since October, ten elementary and middle school teams from Newport News Public Schools have been reading and practicing, gaining the knowledge necessary to compete with schools across the city and region. To participate in the annual book knowledge competition, students in grades four through eight are given a list of twelve grade-appropriate books to read. They practice after-school with their coaches by answering questions about each book, testing their understanding of characters, setting, and plot. In late February, Newport News Public Schools hosted a preliminary battle at Minchville High School. Based on their performances and scores, Charles, General Stanford, and Kiln Creek Elementary Schools advanced to the city finals, while Fitzgerald and Passage advanced at the middle school level. In early March, Main Street Library hosted the Newport News City Finals to crown the top readers and earners from across the city. During this intense battle, General Stanford Elementary earned first place and moved on to the regional battle in Williamsburg where they earned an impressive second place. For these dedicated students, the benefits of participating in Battle of the Books includes enhanced critical thinking skills, improved reading comprehension, a boost in confidence, a commitment to goal-setting, and the often overlooked byproduct of simply having fun with their teammates and friends. Middle and high school students experienced firsthand what working in the shipyard can be like. The N N P S STEM team partnered with Huntington Ingalls Newport News Shipbuilding to host the themed engineering design challenge titled, "High and Dry: Master the Crane, Command the Dock." The secondary challenge took place at Crittenden Middle School, home of the Science, Technology, Engineering, and Mathematics Magnet Program. Each middle school was represented by student teams from all three grades, while each high school sent two talented teams. During the multifaceted challenge, students had to become certified crane operators, draw digital blueprints for their own custom crane, purchase building supplies using a limited budget, and construct a fully-working gantry crane capable of lifting as much weight as possible. This real-world challenge replicated a number of different STEM careers while emphasizing teamwork, communication, and problem-solving for the student teams to succeed. The top winner for middle schools was Passage's sixth-grade team, followed by Gildersleeve's eighth graders and the seventh-grade team from Ella Fitzgerald. Among high schools, Warwick's Team One placed first, leading Minchville's Team Two and Unachievable Dreams Team One. Warwick's top team was also recognized as the overall winner among all secondary teams competing. Crittenden's eighth-grade team and Ella Fitzgerald's seventh graders were honored with a special Five Cs Award for displaying creative thinking, citizenship, critical thinking, collaboration, and communication skills.
I hope you enjoyed this month's School Board Spotlight. During our regular meetings, we provide time for the public to address the school board. These opportunities are scheduled in the early part of our agenda and towards the end of the meeting. As advertised, citizens may submit comments via email up to thirty minutes prior to our meeting time to be included in the official meeting record. For those of you joining us in person, the board considers this an opportunity to listen to your comments. Please understand that we will consider your concerns. We ask that you comply with our three-minute time limit. As you begin your comments, a green light will come on, a yellow light signals that you have thirty seconds remaining, and a red light and beep indicates your time is up. As your name is called, please come forward. We have Reverend Natalie Chamberlain, and then after that will be Jackie Batterson.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board. I'm Reverend Natalie Chamberlain. My pronouns are she and her. I'm part of a broad citizens coalition that have been attending these meetings for nearly two years now. We support equality and respectful treatment of all children, including trans and other LGBTQIA+ youth. I was invited by Dr. Mitchell to be a part of the Strategic Planning Steering Committee that has been convened to look at where the district is and where it's going. One of the things that I have noticed is that in all the education speak, there's a disconnect between espoused and lived values. Any document that talks about all children of the district and yet singles out one group to be othered is not very honest. LGBTQIA children and youth, and especially those who are trans, have been othered. These children and youth are not concepts for discussion but flesh-and-blood people deserving of the same respect and care as every other child in the district. We're asking for your assurance that you're doing everything in your power to protect the queer community and especially those who are trans in your district. We are here in a visible way because they are not always so visible. I am asking you to live by the values you claim in your district documents, and I remind you just how important that is with all of the other people who are being othered by the current regime in Washington.
Jackie Batterson.
Good evening. On April 5th, I had the opportunity to rally and protest what is happening in our country along with over 5.2 million concerned citizens. This past holiday weekend, over three million turned out on a holiday. We are demanding an end to a billionaire takeover and corruption that is occurring, an end to the slashing of federal funds for Medicaid, Social Security, food banks, benefits to working families, and an end to the attacks on immigrants, transgender people, and other marginalized communities. This federal administration is trying to make extinct our transgender community. This is only the beginning. I have been asking you to give our transgender children the same respect and ensure their dignity as every other student in the school system. You have a decent policy in J B. However, your procedure, J B P, takes away the rights of a number of your children who identify as transgender to be addressed by their preferred pronouns and chosen name. I do not know why this was changed, but since it follows this governor's desires, I expect it was due to intimidation from Richmond. Now, I am sure you will be feeling the same from Washington as they are known to attempt to hold funds over the heads of others. Since this is an independent school district, I would expect that maybe someone would stand up and say enough to the interference from political outsiders. Someone, maybe just anyone. I will end this evening with quotes that are particularly relevant from two different people. Terrible things are happening outside. Poor, helpless people are being dragged out of their homes. Families are being torn apart. Men, women, and children are separated. Children come home from school to find their parents have disappeared. That is from the diary of Ann Frank, January 13th, 1943. Secondly, life is never easy. There is work to be done and obligations to be met, obligations to truth, to justice, and to liberty. John F. Kennedy. Thank you for your time.
Next, we have Jim Batterson, and following will be Jessica Allen.
Good evening, I'm Jim Batterson from Newport News. I'm here tonight to talk about a 1.5 million-dollar, oh, it was a billion, million-dollar line item in your budget for next year, and that's the lighting of elementary school athletic fields. I'm here to ask you not to put lighting into the Haydenwood Fields, give you a little history of those fields. They sit with established neighborhoods and houses on three sides, separated only by a thin line of trees. The houses were built between 1955 and 1961 and preceded any ball fields on that field. The history a little bit more is in the 60s, the Parks and Rec put in some little, simple sandlot infields and some backstops, and they ran some simple games for a number of years in the 60s. But since that time, it's really become actually a beautiful facility as the nonprofit, Little Leaks have come, organized Little Leaks have come in and improved the fields and put in fencing and grass and all those things. However, in the 90s, a survey was done by Newport News Public Schools of the neighbors on those three sides, and they clearly said they did not want lighting, and they did not want electronically amplified sound on those fields. And so far, the schools have held to that, and we haven't had either amplified sound except on opening day, and we haven't had lighting. So I'm asking you now to remind you of these things because you're a little younger than I am, that this history is there. Oh, and that time Parks and Rec said they did not put lighting into established neighborhoods. I know of no neighborhoods that can be more established than these that have been there for seventy years. Please do not impact negatively anymore on the quality of life and by those neighbors around these fields. I ask you that tonight and wanted to make you aware of that situation. Please do not put lighting in the Haydenwood Fields with your budget item this next year. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Batterson. And to actually served on this board as chair, we appreciate your time today and then.
Can't get away.
Jessica Allen.
Hi, I'm Jessica Allen. I have two kids in the public school system, and this is our first year with school buses. And to say it's been a rough one is an understatement. Since the beginning of the school year, our school bus has been habitually late by, I'm talking thirty minutes. I've called Transportation many times, and I've been met with a series of excuses, traffic, delays from previous stops, being understaffed, et cetera. While I can empathize with those situations, I can't continue to use those as reoccurring reasons why my children are late for school and why I am late for work. It's just unacceptable. The situation turned from inconvenient to dangerous when I put my kindergarten son on the school bus that had arrived late, and by the middle of the day, I was called to let me know that my son was not at school, that he was marked absent. And I don't think that it's too much to ask that parents don't go through that moment of panic of where is my child that I put on a school bus while the school staff puts eyes on their kid. He was fine, he was at school. A lot of checks and balances failed that day, but the first one was the school bus not being on time. The last draw has occurred over the last month. I noticed on the app that the school bus was way out yonder, so I canceled my morning meetings, and I took my kids to school, and I spoke to somebody and explained the inconsistencies and issues we've been having over the school year. It was at that time that I was told that there is no bus driver assigned to my kid's route, and we should expect thirty-minute delays to an hour. There was no formal communication from Transportation to let us know that. I'm thankful that I have a job that allows me to stay with my kids in the morning where I can get them on the school bus or get them to school if the bus just doesn't come, which has happened. I know there are a lot of parents that don't have that luxury, and we live in a world where we have to be considerate of the evils out there. We lost Newport News students earlier in the year to gun violence at a school bus stop, and we have yet to see action when it comes to the buses being an hour late or a bus driver not coming at all. My question today, don't need an answer today, but my question today is, what actions are in place at the moment to rectify this? We cannot let students stand outside waiting for a bus for an hour. It's unacceptable, it's unsafe, and I don't think I'm asking too much for this to be looked into. Thank you.
David Brinkman and Mary Voss will be next.
Good evening, board members. Remove Section H from Procedure J B P and remove harmful lies from Section G. Ranking children is not the point of school sports. The point of all of this is to make students college, career, and citizen-ready, which supports support through physical health and social connection. Telling people, no, I don't believe you, I don't care that your parent believes you, you're not real, that's, does not support social connection. School systems should defer, for the purpose of ranking, school systems should defer to championship leagues to set rules for what chemicals constitute an unfair advantage and for how long. Supposedly, we have the current Procedure J B P because parents didn't get enough of a say in their children's education. In Section H, they still don't. Only the governor gets a say in our school sports despite state law saying that he doesn't get a say. Also, gender is not a decision, let alone one that someone else can make for you. It should be obvious that what haters have to spend so much time and energy enforcing is not a natural order as they claim. People are like this and have always been like this. Another way to promote college, career, and citizen readiness is to stop repeating hateful lies that have a causal effect on kids not reaching adulthood and on kids reaching adulthood without a support network for those pursuits. Quote, "Alternative facilities, where you can opt out of ever using a bathroom that a trans person was once in," does the opposite of promoting privacy and safety, and you need to stop saying that. Rubber stamping, what the superintendent says or the governor says or what somebody else says is a dereliction of the power and responsibility to represent your constituents in this office. Stop hiding from a vote. Thank you.
Mary Voss.
Hello, Mary Voss, an N N P S teacher, parent, and graduate, and Secretary of the Newport News Education Association. The N E A advocates for contract negotiations for N N P S employees in order to give our hard-working staff and teachers a seat at the negotiating table for improved working conditions, pay, and benefits, teacher and staff working conditions or student learning conditions. So stronger contracts benefit our students through negotiations such as smaller class sizes, more planning time, more restroom breaks, seniority and job security, and increased safety measures. We now have five employee groups that have majorities of N E A authorization cards signed in support of the union representing them at the negotiating table. Transportation, custodians, plant services, security, and nurses, with teachers and instructional assistants quickly approaching majorities as well. N E A is ready to get started with these five employee groups that have majorities, knowing that additional employee groups will soon exceed majorities as well and join them. N E A is in the process of verifying these groups' authorization cards with V E A. After the verification process, Dr. Grace wanted me to share that he will present an affidavit to the school board that N E A has majorities in these employee groups. N E A looks forward to working with the board to create stronger contracts, which will of course benefit students very much as well as our teachers and staff. In addition, the N E A is advocating for $1,000 bonuses for staff and teachers through matched funding from the proposed General Assembly budget, which includes a line item for recommended $1,000 bonuses for all state employees, which of course includes N N P S teachers and staff. Thankfully, the governor did not veto the recommended $1,000 bonuses for state employees. And you may recall on our recent N E A budget survey, ninety-four percent of the nearly 300 employees that we polled strongly support these $1,000 bonuses for N N P S teachers and staff. Please follow the spirit of the General Assembly's recommended $1,000 bonus for state employees, which includes school staff and teachers. Finally, I ask the school board to protect our vulnerable students from attacks by the Trump administration, such as trans and other LGBTQ+ students, and also... and also immigrant and migrant students in our district. Please stand up for these vulnerable children and teens by striving for the most respectful and non-discriminatory policies possible, such as the changes to JBP that was recommended by other speakers tonight in protection of LGBTQ plus students. And I do want to say thank you again to the board for limiting ISIS access to school buildings to what is legally required by law so that they cannot terrorize our students at school. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Last card I have is from Joyce Blough.
Good evening. I'm a bus driver, been a bus driver for 20 years. I'm gonna piggyback off the parent that says something about the buses being late. Now, we're about 100 drivers short. So if you have 70 between 80 callouts, what can you imagine about them telling us you gotta double a run, maybe two runs or three runs out of one school? Which means kids is normally in school at 7 o'clock, probably won't get to school till 8 or 9 o'clock. Then that goes on to the B school, then it goes on to the C school. And their favorite word is, we'll take a late. And at this point, seem like every time they hire new drivers, they don't last a month, probably not two weeks. And one problem is the behavior. Their lack of the accountability of behavior in the administration of the school. So when the drivers, the new drivers see it is not gonna work, they up and leave. We losing drivers like we lose socks in the washing machine. It's too many biased situations and prejudice in transportation against certain people, against certain groups. It's too much favoritism and disrespect on the job. If you speak up for yourself, then you're retaliated against. The rules apply to certain people and don't apply to other people. If you plan on hiring new drivers, they're not gonna last long. If things are not changed in the so-called White House. If we are already shorthanded, we need to fix the problem instead of adding to the problem and putting more work on the drivers. Because once these drivers started calling out, you get, put some more work on other drivers, then they're gonna start calling out. Then you put work on another driver, then they're gonna start calling out. All I can say is good luck on finding drivers for '25, '26.
Okay, thank you for your comments and coming to share your thoughts with us this evening. We will now move on to section three, the consent agenda, which includes 3.01 minutes from the work session on March 5, 2025, 3.02 minutes from the public hearing, March 12, 2025, 3.03 minutes from the regular meeting, March 18, 2025. This also includes 3.04 financial reports, including the revenue and expense reports for March 2025 and nutrition, child nutrition reports for March 2025. 3.05, the personnel report. 3.06 easement on Warburg Boulevard, wide sidewalk. 3.07, the budget transfer. At this time, can we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Madam Chair, I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Ammon. Any comment or response?
Just one, one question about the sidewalk. As I understand, or just want to confirm, the sidewalk will allow students to walk to school at passage. Is that, that's good, okay.
Okay, other questions? Please call the roll. Hunter.
Four.
Alger.
Four.
Ammon.
Four.
Best.
Four.
Brown.
Four.
Harris.
Four.
Searl's Law.
Four.
Motion passes seven zero. Thank you. We'll move on to section four, action items. We have 4.01, special education annual plan. Dr. Mitchell will take an update there.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As you recall, last month Vivian Latulow, Director of Special Education, came before you to prevent the proposed special education spending plan. Tonight, we are asking you to approve that spending plan. I believe that her department took a lot of time to look at the funding, what needed to be done, what our students need. And I am in full support of the spending plan that has been presented.
Thank you very much. Do I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I move to approve the special education annual plan as presented.
And do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
Oh, yes, thank you, Ms. Harris. I heard from that end. Any discussion? All right, please call the roll. Hunter.
Four.
Alger.
Four.
Ammon.
Four.
Best.
Four.
Brown.
Four.
Harris.
Four.
Searl's Law.
Four.
Motion passes seven zero. Okay, thank you so much. We'll move on to section five, reports and information. Five point, I did it again. I skipped that personnel action. I need to put it on another line. 4.02, personnel actions. Dr. Mitchell, please let us know who we have.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Tonight, I'd like to recommend Dr. Yvette Smith as the Executive Director of Human Resources. Dr. Smith has a doctorate in educational leadership and supervision from Wingate University. She currently works as the Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources and Professional Development with Wayne County Public Schools. We are excited about the level of experience that she would bring to us. Not only does she have a wealth of knowledge in human resources, but she also has been a school-based leader. She has been a teacher, an assistant principal, a director of curriculum. So she has a wide lens and experience in school districts. Let me go to the second one.
Yes, you can go to the second.
We have a second one that I am recommending. Mr. Robert White is the new Executive Director of Public Information and Community Involvement. Mr. White has a Master of Arts degree from Liberty University. He currently works as a Communication Strategy Advisor for Fleet Marine Forces and Atlantic Marine Forces Command. He has also worked as a Public Affairs Manager and a Graphic Design Manager Illustrator for the United States Marines.
Do I have a motion?
Yes, Madam Chair. I move to approve the superintendent's personnel recommendations for Robert C. White for Executive Director, Public Information and Community Involvement, and Dr. Yvette Smith for Executive Director, Human Resources.
And do I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Ammon, thank you. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll. Hunter.
Four.
Alger.
Four.
Ammon.
Four.
Best.
Four.
Brown.
Four.
Harris.
Four.
Searl's Law.
Four.
Motion passes seven zero. Great, thank you so much.
Thank you.
We look forward to meeting them in person.
Thank you.
Now we'll move on to section five, reports and information. We have 5.01, the Comprehensive Advanced Learning Plan. So Dr. Mitchell, who do we have with us joining us with this report?
This evening, we have Mr. Daryl Pancratz joining us. We are excited to share a forward-looking presentation that outlines our Comprehensive Advanced Learning Plan. This is a strategic vision that really tries to ensure that every student in Newport News Public Schools has access to a rigorous academic opportunity. And Mr. Daryl Pancratz is our Executive Director of Teaching and Learning.
Yes, ma'am. All right, well, good evening, Chairwoman Searl's Law, Vice Chair Dr. Best, School Board, and Dr. Mitchell. Tonight, I'm excited to provide an overview of our NNS Comprehensive Advanced Learning Plan. Newport News Public Schools is committed to providing access and opportunity for all students, emphasizing that advanced learning can be achieved by all. Our advanced learning programs, magnet schools, and specialty academies are designed to challenge students academically and prepare them for future careers. The Advanced Learning Plan was created through the Advanced Learning Design Team that was comprised of about 30 members from school leadership, the Department of Teaching and Learning, and input from administrators. The plan outlines a strategic vision to ensure equitable access in advanced learning opportunities for all students. It integrates goals, strategies, and actionable steps to expand that access, the opportunity, and the support, and aims to create pathways that lead to academic and professional success for every student in NNS. Our plan includes six critical goals that I will be discussing in the slides to follow. Goal one, enhancing and expanding opportunities. Goal two, strengthening program alignment. Goal three, improving communication. Four, expanding student support systems. Number five, forging partnerships with higher education and industry. And finally, number six, monitoring and measuring that success. Goal number one is to enhance and expand opportunities for all of our students. The plan will address this by expanding student access to magnet and specialty programs by hosting informational workshops, updating our digital and print resources, and offering additional opportunities connected to those programs. In addition, we will be partnering with our ESL department to provide equitable access by translating our applications and all of our digital print resources, which has not been done previously. And finally, we will increase the number of underrepresented groups in advanced-level classes at the secondary level by ensuring that all high school students earning a standard or advanced diploma will enroll in at least one advanced-level course annually. This will provide all students an opportunity to challenge themselves in an area that is of interest to them. In addition to the previously mentioned opportunities, we have developed a communication plan that I will be discussing further in this presentation. In accordance with our gifted plan that was recently approved by you, we will prepare students for gifted identification by providing opportunities to build critical and creative thinking skills at younger ages. We will also expand our pre-advanced placement courses at the middle school level to include strategies and targeted courses. In the fall, we held a magnet and specialty programs preview night. We estimate that about 400 people were in attendance. And this was an opportunity for our magnet directors and principals to interact with the community and discuss their programs and showcase them. In that effort, in the fall, we also did branding of our current magnet programs and did a revamp to all of their logos. On the slide, you will see the logos for each of the magnet and specialty programs offered in NNS. Schools were also issued pop-up banners with their school logos, which you'll see on the right side of this slide above. They were given table overlays, which are on the left-hand side, and redesigned one-page brochures. These were all used at the preview night and individual school open house nights that followed afterwards. These were then sent with the schools so that they now have branding materials and kind of have a toolkit of a take-your-show on the road. I provided you brochure examples in the folder that each of you have, as well as our Comprehensive Advanced Learning Plan for you to see as reference. Goal number two is to strengthen our program alignment. The teaching and learning team will work to develop clear pathways so that counselors and families have all materials outlining feeder schools and advanced programs at all levels. We will also align curriculum at our program to ensure alignment with current industry standards. In addition, we will be auditing each program to identify strengths and where we can address improvement areas for each school. In this work, we have already had committee meetings with program-specific supervisors to align their efforts in helping with these programs. We have also gathered feedback from teachers, parents, and students to identify areas of need. And we have also implemented magnet and program administrator meetings to align the work of our advanced learning in each of their buildings. Goal number three is a big one. So we're gonna go through each one of the things identified on the slide that you see in front of you. Goal number three is to improve our communication. And we have eight steps that are listed on the slide above. Number one is we're gonna create an interactive course guide launch. We'll be developing an interactive online course guide that will empower users to explore personalized pathways from pre-K through 12th grade. This dynamic tool will guide families and staff through a journey across all grade levels, highlighting advanced learning opportunities at each stage. Participants will have the option to navigate through various options to visualize educational pathways tailored to the NNS offerings, supported informed choices at every step of the way. Number two will be our advanced program playbook. We will develop a detailed division-level playbook for internal stakeholders. It will include links to the administrator handbooks, roles, procedures, courses, partnerships, recruitment processes, and professional development. This will streamline the management of magnet and specialty programs with clear guidance for program execution. Number three, we will enhance our magnet website. We will update the NNS website for better family and community engagement, clearly define program pathways, and create uniform, interactive showcasing unique aspects of each pathway, making the framework more comprehensible and accessible for our external stakeholders. Number four, we're gonna expand our extended learning story. So broadening that extended learning content to include diverse, experience-based activities and provide thorough information on our summer programs and additional opportunities, emphasizing student learning experience beyond traditional classroom settings for student growth and opportunities. Number five is our social media strategy. We will enhance our social media presence to promote programs. We will utilize Instagram to share success stories, magnet branding, and increase awareness. We will also use this to highlight NNS advanced learning programs through engaging content that captures community interest and boosts student involvement. Number six is our magnet program branding initiative. We will incorporate advanced learning program branding into all of our school merchandise, create program-specific t-shirts and school spirit items to foster pride. We'll establish magnet spirit days and special events to celebrate achievements, enhancing unity, and community engagement within the student body. Number seven will be our magnet professional development framework. This will outline a professional development plan for staff related to program implementation. This will focus on training that aligns with program responsibilities, ensuring administrators and teachers are prepared to support advanced learning and specialty programs effectively within their buildings. And number eight, we're gonna create a magnet administrator handbook. This will ensure administrators are well-equipped with a comprehensive handbook outlining each program, partnership, recruitment strategies, and advisory processes. The handbook, the handbook will serve as a vital resource to guide effective program management and align with advanced learning goals at each school. Goal number four is expanding student support systems. Through mentoring, tutoring, and counseling programs, we will provide targeted academic support for students in advanced courses. In addition, we will expand our summer readiness programs to students in 6th through 12th grade. Previously, it was 9th through 12th. This will include AB and IB prep in the summer, as well as summer boost opportunities for students to get a jump start before entering the next year with an advanced course. We will accomplish this through our summer school programs and embedding advanced summer opportunities. Goal number five involves forging partnerships with higher education institutions and industry leaders. We are expanding partnerships with higher education and industry to provide more opportunities for dual enrollment, internships, and attract for students to earn an associate's degree before leaving high school. We will also collaborate with local business partners to increase internship opportunities for our students. In an effort to increase our dual credit program, we will need to invest in our teachers. We are working with Christopher Newport University to help create a pathway for teachers to become dual enrollment certified. Many teachers have a master's, but it may not be in the content needed to teach the course. We are establishing programs that will allow teachers to obtain the 18 graduate hours in specific subjects to teach the dual enrollment courses. We are focusing on English, math, science, and social studies as our first cohorts. Goal number six is our monitoring and measuring success goal. We will conduct annual reviews for all of our programs in Newport News Public Schools. We'll be looking at key indicators such as enrollment trends, program completion rates, academic outcomes, and post-secondary placements. Also in goal six, we will be joining the Magnet Schools of America organization. This will strengthen our programs by each of our magnet and specialty programs becoming nationally certified magnet schools. This will provide structure as well as create a framework for all of our programs to work for, work from to be successful. We will also enroll two members from our executive team into the Executive Leadership Academy that the Magnet Schools of America provides. This provides professional development for district leaders who are responsible for magnet program administrators. In addition, we are including a stipend for our elementary and middle school magnets. This will allow for another staff member to be invested into the magnet program other than just the principal as it currently stands. Through the organization, all magnet program administrators will attend professional development that will work on them as leaders of magnets and gear them to deliver P D for their staff. This will align with the efforts of all staff knowing about the magnet and being able to speak about it. This will also provide guidance on how to make our magnets stand out in their specialty areas. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to present our N N P S comprehensive advanced learning plan, and I can now answer any questions you may have.
I know we have a few questions, but I'm just gonna make a statement. In one presentation, I think you covered concerns from almost every board member up here. And I'm very, very thankful.
Yes ma'am.
I will let the next. Yes, Ms. Aiden.
And this is more for maybe those watching that may not, you know, say you have an elementary school or and you're learning some of this. Can you explain a bit more about dual enrollment and how that versus early college? What are those two types of things?
Absolutely. So the dual enrollment courses are courses offered through most likely be P C C um for students to be able to take at their high schools um and earn that college credit as they're going through. Early college would be them taking usually their English class during the fall semester and then being able to go over to the college in their spring semester to complete courses at the, at the school.
Early college is a semester at the college, whereas dual enrollment would be you could earn college credit, but you could be at your high school to do that.
Correct. Yes ma'am.
Other comments or questions?
Yes, um, I had attended the, the preview night.
Yes ma'am.
Which was excellent. I mean, I, I, I think there was more, there were more than four hundred people, honestly.
Okay, I'll take it.
My question is, um, how many of the folks that came or how many applications did you actually receive as a result of all the marketing and everything that's been done?
I can tell you, at least, I don't know if it was, you know, the effect of the preview night, but on-time applications this year for elementary was five hundred and ninety-seven. Middle school was four hundred and twenty-three, and high school was four hundred and ten. And that was on-time applications. Um, the magnet application portal closed December sixteenth.
And is this different than prior years?
Uh, yes ma'am. We saw increases, uh, especially at the high school level. Um, from there. So, yes, and it was great because at that event, they were able to go speak to the high schools, see exactly what the high schools could offer them, and all the schools, but we definitely saw increases at the high school level. Yes ma'am.
Okay. Mr. Brown?
Yeah, so my question, uh, is as well more so for the community in regard, in regards to goal five, forging partnerships. So if I am a, uh, if someone is a leader at a company, uh, or they own a small business and they would like to partner with us, how, how should they and how can they get in contact with us, and what are the types of, types of opportunities that you're looking for those, uh, companies to provide to Newport News?
Absolutely. So they can definitely reach out to my office. Um, we are, we have a committee that's working on specifically those partnerships. And so what we're truly trying to strategically develop is those companies or those businesses, um, that are in our community that align with that magnet program. So like, for instance, we have aviation at Denby. So what aviation companies are out there that can align with us and work with us? Or at Heritage, we have the STEM magnet program. So engineering, math, all those things that we can do. So please feel free to reach out to us. That would be great. Um, and we, like I said, we have our team who is also reaching out to businesses that we've identified. Um, we've created a spreadsheet with, I think it was, uh, about a hundred businesses that we've identified so far that aligned with our current magnet programs.
Dr. Ness?
Um, oh yeah. Um. One of the concerns regarding the magnet program, because I will ask people and I try to encourage and always push it, especially as we get close to the deadline for people to apply, is that there is a, I guess, and I'm actually to speak to this, like misconception that you can't have a quote-unquote challenging child. And I've had people say, well, I'm, I'm not gonna apply to that because they're gonna de-select my child. Or if the child is at their home or assigned school, they're not gonna work as hard to help them. If I put them at a magnet school, they'll say they're not doing well, or they're not adjusting well, or they're not a good fit, and they'll put them out. And, and that's, I've heard, you know, a couple of people say that. And I assure them though, wherever your child goes, we put forth a hundred and ten percent to help them to be successful. So can you speak to that a little bit? Because they're concerned about de-selection. That's, I keep hearing that.
Understandably, and absolutely, and we have looked at our whole process of applications, um, but it is a lottery system, right? And the students are coming in there, we're picking through a lottery, it's going through. Um, so we are not de-selecting students based upon levels or anything like that because we will make sure that if they are selected to go to those programs through the ladder, or through the lottery, we have the supports that they need to be successful at the programs.
That was what they're concerned about. If they are selected, if they get in a program, then after they get in the program, being de-selected, not so much getting into the program, but being able to stay in the program.
Not at all. So we are making sure that we can service all students that are selected into those programs and make sure that they can be successful.
So you're telling the public there's not a high turnover, we don't get a high number, de-select the students and that type of thing?
No ma'am.
Y'all listening out there?
Yes. Absolutely.
Thank you for that clarification.
Yes.
Mr. Verde?
Sir?
Uh, so, good evening. First, I wanted just to thank you for all the amazing work you've been doing. I wanted to say that even just this year, I've already noticed tangible improvements in the I B program at Warwick. And I wanted to thank you for your consideration of student concerns and also just wanted to give a little shout-out to the Warwick administration for all the work they've been doing for that. I did have one concern. I was just wondering about, um, if there's anything being done to perhaps set up a pipeline to improve student attendance to the Governor's School for Science and Technology from Newport News? As I do believe we have fewer students than, say, York County and others, other districts. The classes I have there have relatively few students from Newport News.
And that is part of our plan as well. Um, and we've been working with our advanced school department, Ms. Dr. Beckerite, our gifted students as well, to work on our process to make sure that we have enough students applying to those programs. Um, and so making sure that the applications are at the schools where they need to be, making sure we've translated them in certain instances, so that way we will have more students applying to those programs.
And Mr. Verde, if I can also add that while we have, uh, um, students who obviously are in their program, one of the differences between our district and York County is our students have so many other options. So that always plays into it. Sometimes students have too many options. Like, they're not sure which thing they want to do, but I do know that the committee is working on attempting to increase those numbers as well.
Yes ma'am.
All right, thank you so much.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? We appreciate your presentation.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
We're on to five point zero two. The attendance report, five point zero three, the membership report, five point zero four, construction report. Board members, you have received a copy of these reports. Are there any questions at this time? Hearing none, we'll move on to five point zero five, comments by our superintendent, Dr. Mitchell.
Thank you so much, Madam Chair. I will begin my comments tonight with sharing that middle and high school students representing each of our secondary schools um in Newport News participated in the school division's engineering design challenge, which was held March the twenty-eighth at Crittenton Middle School. Mr. Devon, could you advance the slide for me? Thank you. Warwick High School's school team one was the overall and high school division winner, and Passage Middle School's, uh, sixth grade team was the winner for the middle school division. We certainly want to thank our partner, Newport News Shipbuilding, for serving as our community partner for that event. Gildersley Middle School hosted the Christopher Newport University and Newport News Community Walk on April the first. And as you can see, the C N U president, William Kelly, and Gildersley's principal, Roland Noel, were there exchanging greetings and gifts. The band was there, the cheerleaders were there to welcome their neighborhood visitors with music. It was an all-around wonderful experience. I do wanna thank some of our special participants, Delegate Shelley Simons, Senator Danny Diggs, Police Chief, uh, Chief Drew, who comes to everything, and of course, school board member Lisa Searls Law was there as well. Moving on, students at Denby High School's Aviation Academy, this, all of these things are exciting, but I think this excited me the most today. The Denby Aviation High School Academy continues to assemble lockers that are used on the International Space Station. Many people were not aware of that. And they recently received photos of one of their autographed lockers that is right now in use on the station. So since twenty sixteen, our students have worked on the lockers as a part of the NASA HUNCH program. And HUNCH stands for High School, High Schools United with NASA to Create Hardware. So wonderful opportunity for our students. Catherine Johnson Elementary School was honored with a very prestigious Christine Darden STEM Community Partnership Award on April seventeen at the Innovations in Family Engagement Symposium. It was held in Raleigh, North Carolina. A cross-departmental collaboration worked together on the STEM Night event that was recognized. The Darden Award recognizes individuals and schools that have made significant contributions to enhancing STEM education and impacting family engagement. So we are excited about that award. Of course, for our school board members, Newport News Public Schools hosted the twenty-twenty-five Virginia School Boards Association Tidewater Regional Spring Networking Forum, right here at Woodside High School on April, uh, twenty-second. The event included dinner, judging of the event's art contests and music provided by our students and groups, as well as a business meeting. And we can say that our very own, Mr. Verde was there and did the introduction of our keynote speaker, and our keynote speaker was the former student representative, Mr. Jordan Moody. We were very proud, and I will tell you that the other school divisions were quite impressed with, um, the program that was put together and with our two young men. April is the month of the military child, and Newport News Public School students and staff wore purple to show our support for our military-connected students on Purple Up Day on April the sixteenth as part of this month-long recognition. We wanna thank our schools and community partners for joining in this celebrate, celebration and honoring this very important part of our school community. April is also a month dedicated to awareness of and acceptance of autism. It has been a time to acknowledge and show support for students and staff who are affected by autism each day in a variety of ways. And Madam Chair, I'd like to say this concludes my comments and remarks for this evening.
Hey, well, thank you so much. We appreciate that. A bunch of exciting things going on. And I know as we're getting close to the end of the school year, your report's gonna get longer and longer.
And longer.
There's a lot of goodness there.
But I will say, as Mr. Hunter says, great things are happening in Newport News.
We'll move on to item six, another opportunity to hear from the public. Are there additional cards? Thank you. We will now move on, uh, to the agenda section for matters by the school board. We will begin with Mr. Verde.
So as I've often done this year, I'll, um, start by just sharing some of what's been going on with Sage. So, um, every Sage meeting, we have a part where students share what's great about their school so that we can learn about different high schools than the ones we go to. And to help capture their thoughts and incorporate them in a school division video presentation, the Channel Forty-seven TV team attended our meeting yesterday to tape individual students as they shared what they liked most about their school. And we were really excited to have, be able to have so many student voices incorporated in that video and, um, to also be able to discuss what we could improve about Sage next year. Our last meeting will be in a couple of weeks, and, um, I believe it's May seventh. We will be electing a new student representative. And, um, seniors at that meeting will also be able to share their plans for, uh, post-graduation. Uh, speaking of seniors, I hope that all of my fellow seniors are doing well and, um, I wish everyone a wonderful rest of the school year. Thank you.
Hey, Selina. Uh, Mr. Mr. Hunter?
Oh, thank you, um, Lady Chair. Uh, great things are happening in Newport News Public Schools. That being said, I'm gonna yield my time to.
Well, thank you. Ms. Aiden?
Sure. Um, I will just echo what Mr. Verde said. We're all back from spring break. We got about a month or so to go, so don't let up on the gas. Keep pushing forward and finish the year strong.
Perfect. Ms. Harris?
It's been a busy, busy last, um, few weeks. Um, I did wanna shout out, uh, Soundscapes. I was, uh, able to go on a tour at Carver Elementary School and meet some of the students that are part of that amazing, um, program and see them actually practice their string instruments, um, and prepare their ensemble pieces. And so I, I really just wanted to shout out that program, um, that's housed at, at two other, I think Discovery and then Greenwood as, as well. Um, so yes, I wanted to shout out, um, the team there. Uh, thank you, uh, Council. Chairwoman. Um, our, our school board chair for, um, inviting me to the P T A awards, uh, reception, uh, on, on Monday. That was also a wonderful, um, uh, sight to see thirty, I believe thirty awards were given out uh, to students in a variety of categories, uh, dance, visual arts. Um, it was, it was a plethora of, 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 uh, talent that is within Newport News Public Schools, so thank you for that. Um, the, again, the Tidewater Regional, uh, Networking Forum where we had an exceptional speaker, uh, Jordan Moody, who is near and dear to my heart, um, but it was great to see all of Virginia represented, all of the school boards represented and coming together, um, and getting rejuvenated and, and motivated through that talk. Um, this morning, we attended the peak childhood, uh, Rise and Shine Breakfast, uh, which is a, a, a new site. I don't, I don't think it's quite open yet, is it?
Not yet.
Just yet, the Newport, uh, Newport, now they're work, working on, um, opening up that new site, um, to, to provide early childcare um, at a, at a, at a, at a level of education and enrichment that, um, I think is really gonna change the game, um, to provide families an opportunity to leave their kids in a safe, um, environment um, where they can go off to work and know that their children are being, uh, fulfilled. And the last, I have to shout out my daughter, who was in Gloucester, um, at the, uh, outdoor track meet. And, uh, she placed first in the long jump, um, jumping seventeen feet. So, um, she is, uh, uh, that was her goal, and she met her goal, so I'm excited for her, so I wanted to shout her out. Marley, great job. Keep up the hard work, and, uh, that's all.
And she is an Ella Fitzgerald jazz.
She is a Woodside.
Oh no, she's a Woodside. And your son is Ella Fitzgerald. All right. Shout out to Woodside.
That's awesome.
Ms. Alger?
Yes, thank you. Uh, I know it's the end of the year, and, uh, that means that assessments are really kicking up and a lot of intervention, and I just wanna, you know, uh, tell everyone to just stay strong. Uh, you, we'll be out there, all hands on deck. We know how that is, uh, at the end of the year. So I, I know that, um, we're gonna do, uh, absolutely great. I also wanna thank, uh, the United Jewish, uh, Community of Virginia Peninsula. They invited us to the Holocaust Remembrance Day Ceremony. Um, I was able to attend, and, um, there was a student from Gildersley that won, um, that was presented an award there and which was really great for his artwork. So, um, you know, we're doing great things throughout the community to represent and be ambassadors on behalf of the school system.
And Mr. Brown?
All right. Well, I'll echo, uh, Ms. Alger's comments to, uh, please finish strong. Uh, make sure that you, uh, hold tight to the, all the way to the end of the year. You're in the homestretch now, so, uh, please, uh, keep up the routines that you've been doing that have made you successful to this point. You wanna maintain that discipline all the way through to the end of the school year. And we look forward, I know that we all look forward to seeing you come across the stage, uh, in early June. Uh, we're looking forward to, uh, seeing everyone and hearing about your great plans for post-graduation. Uh, to my fellow board members, it is, uh, it was an honor that we were able to be the host division for Tidewater Region, for the Tidewater Region, for the Virginia School Board Association, uh, networking event, which was hosted at Woodside High School. And, uh, by all, uh, by all accounts, we put on, I think, a. And, uh, by all, uh, by all accounts, we put on, I think, a world-class event. And we had two great, uh, student speakers who, uh, who represented our, our division very well. And we have a lot to be very thankful and proud of. Uh, we have a student representative, a former student representative who's actually coming back to our school division to be a teacher. And so that speaks, I think, very well of the division and the types of investments that we've, we've made. Uh, we can see the fruits of our investments, and that's what's always very, uh, enriching. Uh, I think to, to me as a board member, we got to see a lot of that tonight. The investments that we've made into, uh, extracurriculars and athletics, we saw the students come forward and, uh, receive those awards. That, that is, I believe, the result, result of the types of investments that we've made through our budgets and, uh, and, and making sure that we provide opportunities for kids to, uh, do those activities and grow. And then lastly, I'll say, just along those same lines, these, we have some tough decisions to make. As, as always, education is a tough business, that there's, there's challenges, uh, and tough decisions to make. But, um, the decisions only get harder the more time that goes by. And we know that, I think we know now that there is some hard decisions that we need to make around our transportation and around our, our zones for our schools to make sure that we're optimizing within the budget that we have uh, and the resources that we have, the number of routes and the distance travel that, uh, kids are going to school and, um, looking at, um, via, via our own policy, the levers that we can pull via policy, what is the optimal mixture that we should have. And the, the longer that that goes on, the harder the decision becomes and the bigger the budget impact gets. You know, transportation, I believe this year is now is going to be roughly about twenty-eight million dollars of our budget. It only gets bigger, and the impacts of those decisions or waiting only gets tougher. So I hope that we do tackle, uh, looking at our, our, our school zones and looking at our, um, our policy via, uh, transportation, uh, very soon at a, at a work session, uh, sooner rather than later, so that we can address the concerns that we, we know are out there within the community and set ourselves up for next year to be a very strong year.
Thank you, Mister Brown. Dr. Bass.
Thank you. Um, a couple of things. For spring break, um, a shout out to Katherine Johnson's Crimson Thunder under the direction of Mister Tyrone, Tyrone Hodges. And I had an opportunity to follow them during spring break, and they performed in West Palm Beach, Florida. And they actually had a large, uh, number of parents, probably maybe forty or so family members that accompanied them. Many of them, they drove or they flew, so they had a really good support group there, but they really represented Newport News Public Schools. Um, they're really an elementary drum line that performs, if we haven't had an opportunity to see them or hear them. They perform at a high school level. And the people in Florida, they have a really expanded, uh, community drum program, but they were thoroughly, um, impressed, and they brought home about three first-place, um, trophies. They did extremely well. So a shout out to Crimson Thunder at Katherine Johnson's Elementary School. Second thing is that I'm just going to continue to encourage, I'm going to just really start pushing this. Boys and girls, you have to read. Just find something that you're interested in. You're just going to have to read. Get a book. You don't have to read all the time, keep it near you. And whenever you have a free moment, read. And parents, read to your students, read with your students. And you model reading for them, um, as well. We just gotta have to just keep pushing that out there. And finally, to all of the Newport News staff members, as a former staff member, as a former educator, this is one of the hardest times of the year. I know that you come back from spring break and you have to make it to Memorial Day. You say, can I just make it to Memorial Day? And then when you get back from Memorial Day, you gotta make it to the last day of school. I sincerely thank you from the bottom of my heart, all staff members for all that you do to get us there. We've been receiving such good news from our leadership team as to the hard work that you've been doing. And boys and girls, we know that you're going to rocket out on those tests. So, so thank you, staff, teachers. Hang in there. We believe in you, and, and boys and girls make them proud for all their hard work. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Bass. Uh, my comments are, one, um, tonight to me showed our budget in action. Um, being able to see our students come, as, as Mister Brown mentioned. Um, those are things that we've invested in, and it's such a joy to be able to see that the students are engaged and it's helping propel them. Um, another thing that has been on my, uh, my heart is this board. I just want to thank this board for keeping students the main thing. It is a hard thing to do, uh, sitting in a political seat, but you all have seriously kept the main thing, the main thing, and I'm really proud of that. Um, and then the last ones that I'm just thoroughly proud of are our staff. Uh, you guys are what makes our children, um, be able to grow and glow and move forward and be the great that they are. And it is a tough time of the year. We all find ourselves doing this for everything we have to go through. But, but let's straighten up, uh, let them see us get through it in a way that is honoring and in a way that really speaks to our excellence in Newport News Public Schools. So, thank you. Have a good night. Meeting adjourned.